Meeting called to order, Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We'll now move on to a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to the special event applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is from Second Baptist Church. They would like to do an Easter egg hunt in Springwood Park on April 4th. Next is Clean Ocean Action, their annual beach suites, which would be on April 17th and October 23rd. And lastly is the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation. They usually do a rally and walk on the boardwalk, but they've restructured it this year to be socially distant. So it's going to be a drive-by event on May 17th between 7:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon. Are there any questions on the applications? Okay, thank you.
Next.
We will now move on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, everyone. So on Saturday, April 24th at 9 o'clock, both Sunset and Westlake Commissions have scheduled lake cleanups. Volunteers are welcome to come to either lake to help out. The City of Asbury Park Season Beach Badges will be on sale on April 15th on both the Viply mobile app and in-person First Avenue and the boardwalk from 10 to 4 daily. And then the City of Asbury Park is also hiring for the summer of 2021. Seasonal positions are available through Public Works, Labor, Boardwalk Restaurant Attendants, Beach Gate Guard, and others. And details are available on the City of Asbury Park website. That's it for me.
Councilmember Clayton.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
No comments at this time.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I'm going to just reiterate the comments that I've made before about our Social Services Department. I got a call from a news organization today asking questions about how our Social Services Department's dealing with the vaccines and the distribution and people not getting appointments because this news organization was contacted by residents who were singing our Social Services Department's praises and got calls after hours and on weekends. So again, just want to reiterate that Doug and Sarah and everybody at the Social Services Department's doing a great job with vaccines. And if anybody needs assistance in getting a vaccine appointment, the city has a phone number to call that I, of course, don't have in front of me right now, but we can assist Asbury Park residents if you qualify in helping you get a vaccine appointment. That's it.
Mayor Moore.
Okay, and Amy, I totally agree with you. Social Services are doing a great job. And the number is 775-0960. Saturday, busy day in Asbury Park. At 10 o'clock, we have at the Boys and Girls Club the Workforce Redevelopment Seminar for the 48 units of the Triangle Project. At 11 o'clock, the Mayor's Wellness Committee is doing a walk in the park and healthy guidelines for everybody. And then I'm going to call everybody's attention to Resolution 2021-160 for $31,593. In 2010, there was an SDA between Madison Marquette and the city. Page 28, Section 4.04, Public Restrooms, Section C. Well, I'm not going to read it all. Part of it reads, "The city and MA Retail agree that the existing public restroom facilities are sufficient, and in the event beach usage increases significantly as the city and MA Retail shall acting together reasonably determine MA Retail shall fund, install, and make operational and open to the general public additional bathroom facilities." The city was going to pursue this last year, but with COVID, we held off. We have provided Madison Marquette with the numbers. In 2011, a year after this agreement, there was approximately 176,000 visitors to the beachfront. In 2019, there was 514,000 to the beachfront. And last year during COVID, 2020, there was approximately 377 visitors to the beachfront. I think the city has proven that that justifies a significant increase. "The additional bathrooms are needed for both beachgoers and visitors who shop and eat at Madison Marquette's businesses and stores, play miniature golf, and everything else on the boardwalk." When we informed Madison Marquette of the need for more bathrooms, the city was not looking for a handout or a bailout. We were asking as partners in the SDA that they simply fulfill their obligation. As a side note, Madison Marquette must maintain $500,000 in escrow. They have to maintain a net worth of between $10 and $30 million. If you go to their, if you Google their homepage, the parent company has an investment portfolio of over $6 billion. Unfortunately, unbelievably to me, response in my humble opinion from Madison Marquette so far has been similar to 1975 when President Ford told New York City to drop debt. Asbury Park has been told, "Drop dead." They are not going to provide the bathrooms they're liable, their liability for. And so the taxpayers are going to be eating this cost. And there's some letters that Donna is going to take over now and read as far as our correspondence with Madison Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will reiterate all that the mayor has said. The most recent letter that we sent to Madison Marquette was sent on March 4th. We still have not received a response from them. And what the letter has talked about, again, was the restrooms. And beginning in January of this year, I have met with representatives of Madison Marquette requesting these bathrooms as the mayor spoke about earlier. And the response we received initially was, "After a very deep dive into our projections of income for the rest of 2021 and into 2022, has been determined that this bathroom request is not possible for this upcoming season." We did all we could do to determine the cost it would take for the units, but due to the impact that the property has taken from COVID-19 setback and the income relief we have granted our tenants, this was not expected nor are the funds available for this to happen. Our attorney responded to this comment in a letter dated on March 4th, stating that, "This response is totally inappropriate and unacceptable. Needless to say, the city is surprised and disappointed by Mr. Muley's response. Bathrooms are a necessary amenity and a key comfort factor for residents and visitors to the boardwalk alike. The city cannot accept Mr. Muley's reasonings for Madison's failure to adhere to its contractual obligations and trust that you will reconsider this response." We have asked Madison Marquette to merely provide us a response no later than March 9th, which they have not done, with evidence of their financial constraints that prevent it from fulfilling its obligations to provide adequate restroom facilities, such as financial statements, balance sheets, and other evidence of rent subsidies or credits given to current tenants. Additionally, we request that any documentation evidencing MA Retail's or Madison Marquette's receipt of loans or grants received under the Paycheck Protection Program of 2020. And the letter in summary says, "Be advised, we are exploring all of the city's options at law and under the subsequent developer agreement to ensure that Madison Retail maintains its obligations. The city expects that MA Retail shall ask for the terms of the subsequent developer agreement, reconsider its position, and fulfill its obligation to fund, install, and make operational the additional restroom facility as set forth by May 15, 2021." And as the mayor indicated, we have not yet received a response from Madison Retail, Madison Marquette. So as such, we've had to move forward with renting bathrooms at the expense of the city to put on, that's why they're on the agenda this evening, and they will be installed and operational for the summer. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Does that complete your comments, Donna?
Yes.
Matters from the city attorney?
Sorry, I was on mute. I have nothing at this time. Thanks, Melody.
You're welcome.
And Melody, before you go on, Donna has other comments, not regarding to Madison Marquette.
Okay.
Is it my turn now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So one other item I wanted to mention this evening is I wanted everyone to be aware that the city does have an existing sign ordinance. And this ordinance prohibits the posting of any signage of any type, which includes lawn signs, stickers, or banners, on municipal property. Municipal property includes, but not limited to, City Hall, the transportation center, municipal parking areas, all of our city parks, plazas, and schools, and the green spaces behind sidewalks and roadways. As we enter into spring, there's a lot of signage for landscapers and other businesses, as well as other postings that occur through the city. We're going to be taking an active approach this spring to remove any of these signs that are placed in the areas that I just mentioned. They will be brought to Public Works for a week, and then they will be destroyed. So if you do happen to place a sign in one of these areas and you find that it's removed, you can contact the City, the Public Works Department, and they will advise you if the sign is in fact there. Violators are subject to summonses and fines, and we're going to take a very proactive approach to keep our city a little cleaner this spring season. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that in lieu of our Easter parade that's normally done, that has not occurred for two years now, we're going to be doing an Easter bag drive walkthrough, much like we did for Halloween. This is going to be on April 3rd from 9 to 11 at City Hall. And information should be posted shortly on the website, but we don't have another meeting before then, so I just wanted to make that announcement now. That's all I have, Melody.
Thank you, Donna. We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, I mean.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the members of the public. Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have 1 minute remaining. I am calling upon 3402, 3402. 3402, star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Allison Kalarick. I'd actually like to defer to Avery Mandeville. I'm sorry, I hit star nine too quickly. I can wait. So if you're glad, I'm going to mute myself, okay?
Okay. All right, I'm calling upon 5324, 5324. 5324, please, star six to unmute yourself.
Yep. Hello, my name is Chad Horle, and I'm with Government Relations at DoorDash. Thank you to the Asbury Park City Council for the opportunity to provide testimony this evening. There's no doubt that COVID-19 has left-
Can we get an address, please?
Yeah, it's 3108 Russell Road, Alexandria, Virginia. There's no doubt that COVID-19 has left restaurants struggling. DoorDash is proud to say that restaurants in our platform have been eight times more likely to remain in business during the pandemic as restaurants have needed to connect with customers off-premise. DoorDash has provided restaurants with over $130 million in grants and relief since the start of the pandemic and recently announced additional relief programs. On tonight's agenda is the introduction of a 15% cap on delivery system we provide our restaurant partners. This is item E1 2021-14. DoorDash is proud of the service we provide our customers and our restaurant partners, as well as the income opportunities this service provides our delivery drivers or dashers. The cap is drafted, restricts our ability to provide the service our customers expect, which undoubtedly will hurt order volume for restaurants and earnings opportunities for dashers. These unintended consequences were recently highlighted in a paper published by the Progressive Policy Institute titled, "Price Controls Won't Fix What's Ailing the Restaurant Industry." We believe there are better ways to support restaurants than capping the contracted commission agreements that exist between us and our contracted partners. We provide a service for restaurants just like credit card processing services or product distributors. Commission caps are an attempt to pick winners and losers in the marketplace. Importantly, Congress has now passed the $28 billion Restaurant Revitalization Fund. We are working closely with the National Restaurant Association to ensure our partners understand how to apply for relief. This is the long-awaited funding that will meaningfully impact the restaurant community. Additionally, vaccination rates continue to increase, and restaurants are beginning to reopen for dining rooms and welcome customers back inside with increased capacity as the time of year approaches, when people begin flocking to the Jersey Shore. If the council is intent on pursuing a restriction on these existing agreements, we would love the opportunity to work with you to develop a cap that produces less harm for all parties involved. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this important matter.
Thank you, next.
Calling upon Carrie Butch. Carrie Butch, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, 500 Deal Lake Drive, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm actually calling in. First of all, thank you for taking Madison Marquette to task and holding them accountable for not living up to their part of the bargain. We appreciate that. I'm actually calling about the budget. I'm calling about, I just wanted to get a sense. I know that last time, last time we did an amendment, this time we're doing an amendment. I was just wondering where we are in the budgeting process and where community participation comes in. You know, we've talked about this before. 22% of our budget goes to the police. 1.5% of our budget goes to Health and Human Services. After the year that we've had with COVID and understanding what it means to have a Health and Human Services, a strong Health and Human Services Department in a community, it might make sense to take a look at that and increase the percentage of Health and Human Services. You did say thank you to the Social Services. So beefing up the Social Services in our city, I think, is a great idea. In addition, we just got some money from the CARES Act. We got allotted, I think, the most in the county, right? Or 10, over $10 million of CARES Act funding. Is there an opportunity? Thank you. Is there an opportunity for the community to get involved in determining where they feel that money should go? And what kind of a process is that going to be to decide on where that money goes? $10 million is what, practically 20% of our current budget? Or is it? So I'm actually excited about that possibility of a-
1 minute remaining.
Taking care of folks here that are living here that have needs. Last but not least, our numbers are going up again in Monmouth County in New Jersey. Where the, in Monmouth County, I don't know where we're at in Monmouth County, but we're number one in the country for COVID cases. So that's New Jersey, not Monmouth County. But it seems to me that Asbury Park in Monmouth County is often a destination. So we're getting, as the weather gets warmer, we're becoming more and more of a destination. So I guess my question, too, is what are we going to do to keep, to keep folks, to continue to keep people safe? So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, it's John Moore. I agree with you, the numbers are going up. And I definitely agree with what Yvonne said over like a, close to a year ago. We are not even close to being out of the woods yet. So we're going to do anything and everything we can as far as, again, having safe beaches, not over, over populating the beaches. But we're going to err on the side of caution, and that's it as far as that. As far as what we can do, again, we cannot make people wear masks. The governor has not given us that permission. As far as the CARES Act, and that's not the right name. And I forget the right name also. And you're right, it's about $10.3 million. We are not the highest in Monmouth County. We've been on the phone and emails within the past week constantly as far as finding out, like, where we can actually spend this money, how we can spend this money. Originally, it was like all one shot's been changed, so it's, you're going to get half one year and half the next year. You've got to spend it by 2024. And again, we're still looking for the parameters. And the city manager, Donna, and myself, we're on a phone call today with Senator Booker's office, trying to get some idea what and how this can be spent on. And obviously, none of it will be spent without the public knowing how it's being spent. And then back to the budget. I'll let Donna answer that question, but we are working on a budget. And this is another problem with this, again, not the CARES Act, because we have to adopt our budget by April. Like, we technically cannot use any of this money that we're going to get down the road to offset this year's budget, to the best of my knowledge. And Donna, if you have anything to say about the budget, please.
Sure. So the plan that Carrie was relating to is called the American Rescue Plan, Mayor. That's what we were speaking with Senator Booker's office about today. As far as the budget, yes, there will be some cuts of some departments and some increases in other budgets. We will have a budget finalized within the next couple of days that we will present to council and to the public for public comment. And, you know, Carrie, I know you've mentioned this many times, and we have heard your request as others. And I hope that the budget we present will address some of your concerns.
Okay, thank you, next.
Yep, I'm calling upon 3402, 3402. Star six to unmute yourself. 3402. All right, I'm going to move on to someone else, then. I'm calling upon 5124, 5124.
Hi, could you hear me?
Now we can, Rita, go ahead.
All right. Trina Moreno, 8th Avenue. I just, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is 8th Avenue going to be including in the paving of streets this year? I think John said it was, but I'm not sure. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, which is about the meeting on Thursday night, the planning board meeting? As far as I'm concerned, that was a total, total disgrace to the taxpayers because they might have just as well voted yes that night. They were helping the developer so much. I don't think that's what the planning board is about, but I could be wrong. Meanwhile, it's two years in the making of a pool. Two years. The lawyers got paid, the planners got paid, the engineer got paid. Everybody got paid, and yet we can't resolve this one issue. But, you know, you miss the point on all of this. They're worried about decorating this building. The point is that most of the taxpayers, and that was the most I've ever seen in years, came to the meeting opposing this pool. And that's the point. I mean, if you're going to vote yes, you might as well do it. It's two years now. And I don't know how the council feels about it, but I thought that meeting was a total disgrace. They act like the taxpayers are two years old, that they don't know any better. But that's not the way it goes. I think there's a few people that can think. And I mean, just, the point is, either you put it up or you go with the taxpayers. There was, in 2002, there was no buildings there. So you can't even go by that plan. North Beach was not there. And they all know that.
1 minute remaining.
So in 2002, those decisions that they made then, they don't apply to today. We have so many buildings down there on Kingsley Street and so much new buildings. I mean, how could you go by that old plan? And, you know, Long Branch just got rid of their developer because they didn't develop on time. I think they're, we're behind times, too. Convention Hall's not done, the casino's not done. Something has to be done. And I really thank you for taking on Madison Marquette. And that's all I have to say. Is 8th Avenue going to get paved?
Thank you, Rita, it's John Moore. 8th Avenue's going to get paved, but I'm going to be brutally honest with you. It's not going to get paved this year. Is it towards the top of our list? Absolutely. Again, the city manager and myself, we're on the call today with Booker's office. As far as like even this new bill, which is the American Rescue Plan, there's $10 billion slated for infrastructure programs to help local governments continue crucial capital projects. So we asked about that. And we also asked about, there's a House of Energy Commerce Committee bill for $312 billion for infrastructure. So, believe me, a lot of times people say, "Well, you're not doing anything." We, the administration, be it Donna, Michael, and everybody else, Julian, and myself and other council people have been texting, emailing both our great Congressman Pallone, our great Senator Booker Mendez, where Asbury Park's saying, "Hey, look, we're happy we're getting this money. And we're not trying to be greedy, but let us know how we can get ahead of the curve as far as this infrastructure money coming down the road." So as far as 8th Avenue, no. As far as the planning board questions, that's a question like the council can't answer. You're going to have to take those questions to the planning board. And if I missed anything, Donna chiming, if not, next.
You guys are all mayor.
I'm calling upon 3402 again, 3402. Star six to unmute yourself. 3402.
Third time's the charm.
There you go.
You there?
Yes, your name and address.
My name is Allison Kalarick, 1409 Wicker Pecos. I just wanted to touch upon what Carrie was talking about regarding keeping the boardwalk and the town safe with regards to COVID masking and enforcing COVID masks. You know, a year ago, May 6th, I messaged Mayor Moore, and I said, you know, not for- But, you know, at that point, the beach was a total, you know, congested, you know, place people were gathering, they weren't wearing masks, in crowds. And, you know, he even said that it was, he had been there, and it was about 20%, but he blamed, you know, the governor for not making it mandatory. And I'd asked if the municipality can pass a local ordinance. And this was in May of last year. We're talking about, this has affected all of us in terrible ways. You know, have you spoken to the attorneys to see if it's legal or not yet to pass a local ordinance where it would incentivize people to wear a social distance when they come to our town? We're a tourist destination. You know, they're coming here from all over and bringing whatever they've got with them. We all know that it's an asymptomatic presenting virus at first. So they're sitting at our restaurants, they're going to our stores, and God knows what they're bringing with them. So- it would, it would the whole of Asbury Park to maybe stick a $30 fine for not wearing a mask on someone. I mean, we've got police roaming around giving people tickets for their dogs being not registered.
One minute remaining.
Why can't we do this? You know, is it legal? Have you looked into it? I know it'll take like two council meetings with a public hearing and then there's a 20 day wait period. But like, we can do this before it gets crazy here. And I, I don't think that it's, it should be off the table. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, it's John Moore. Thank you. Uh, I'll let Fred chime in, Fred, the city attorney, Mr. Fedo. We cannot enforce COVID masks. And we can, to the best of my knowledge, and the attorney can correct me, we cannot pass an ordinance that supersedes a governor's executive order. As we tried last year to open up restaurants in June at 25% and the governor and the state took Asbury Park to court. So to the best of my knowledge, we cannot supersede an executive order by the governor. And Mr. Fedo, you can chime in.
Yes, Mayor, uh, that is correct. We can encourage and recommend, uh, the wearing of masks in public places, but we cannot enact a local ordinance, uh, to require it. As you indicated, that would go beyond the authority that's been granted pursuant to the governor's executive orders.
Thank you. And believe me, I would be glad.
Shall I move on, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, sorry, next.
I'm calling upon Newark One Voice, Newark One Voice.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record. Sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I want to talk about the American Rescue Act. Uh,
Can you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Tracy, Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to talk about the American Rescue Act. Uh, right now, uh, Asbury Park is allotted to receive 10.3 million dollars. And I, I want to direct this to the, to the mayor and, and, uh, the city, the city manager, how, he just said that the public will be involved in the spending of this money. Uh, this money also was given to Asbury Park at 10.3 million because of people, uh, living under the poverty level. And that was a part of why this money was calculated so high. Uh, but we want to know, is there going to be a committee? Is this going to go to a special committee? Are we going to have people at the table after you find out what the guidelines are? So we can have out of the box thinking on what this process is. And also, uh, the next thing is to talk about, uh, partnering with the, the school district, uh, on our, on, on children's loss and other issues of learning and community activity that could be spent out of this money. So we want to look at quite a few different issues that are going to affect this community, uh, with that 10.3 million on allotment and how to, how we can spend it correctly. Uh, also, we want to talk about, uh, yeah, this, this, uh, the, I know we're still talking about the beach club. And I wish we can support an ideal that finds other solutions with this beach club. I know the council can't do it, uh, but I would like to, uh, figure out other things or, or, or issues that we can address that will surround this beach club if it is or if not approved. Uh, and the last thing is that right now, we, we are
One minute remaining.
We're going to have a special election and for the rent control. And, you know, as, as we've gotten together, and a lot of people say we only had a certain amount of numbers. We actually, there were a lot of signatures that weren't turned in that added up to the 700 signatures that we have gotten, uh, for this rent control bill. And people don't know is people need a, a, a secure and healthy, uh, uh, healthy, uh, living situation. So we support people to come out on April 20th to, to point themselves and make sure that they have stable housing in this, in this community. And that's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tracy. I don't think I said the public would be involved, but I said the public would know everything before done. And of course, we will gladly accept any suggestions, any ideas, uh, be it inbox, out of box. And again, it's kind of tough to do, but we're open to anything, especially it's kind of tough to do when like we can't get clear guidance from the feds who are giving us this money. As far as like helping the Board of Education, believe me, they're getting many, many millions of dollars also. So what they're doing with their money, I don't have a clue. So that could be, I think they have a meeting this week. You could call them up and ask the same question. Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Maureen Nevin. Maureen Nevin, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. Um, I'd just like to, um, make sure that everybody understands, um, what, uh, Tracy was just referring to. Eileen Chapman had at the end of the evening. Um, and I was muted, so I wasn't able to respond at all. Um, she said that my comment about saying that we had, um, 700 supporters, um, that want rent control, uh, was inaccurate because, um, the number of, uh, of signers of our petitions, um, amounted to 349, I think that was. Um, the only reason that, uh, that lower number was accepted was because they got to that, that number and that's all that the clerk needed in order to go for the referendum. So, um, and then Melody can clean up what I just said. Um, if she wants to do that. Um, but I think, um, it's important that people know that there were 700 signatures that we were able to, um, to get with very low effort, I must say. Um, people are very eager for rent control. I want to make sure. Sorry, I'm a little bit late joining the meeting and I didn't get a chance to go through the, uh, agenda yet. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to comment, Maureen. What I did say was that there were 301 signatures that were validated by our city clerk. That was my comment.
Shall I move on?
Yes.
Okay, I'm calling upon 5909, 5909. Star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, um, Avery Mandeville, 610 Sewell Ave. Um, I'm piggybacking off of what other people have said, um, like Allison and Carrie, um, about the, um, the lack of masks that are on the boardwalk and in other public places. Um, to be honest, um, the idea that, I know Mayor Moore has said we can't make people wear masks. Um, I find that to be entirely insulting to the people that work and live in this town. Um, the other day I was walking to my job on convention hall, in convention hall, and it was pretty crowded. It was, it was a beautiful day and people had come out and, um, and it was a tight, tight walk. And an unmasked man coughed on me. And I thought to myself, this is insane that this is acceptable and that there's no, um, there's nobody policing, nobody enforcing that masks are being worn. So my question is, what can we do to, how can we circumvent this, um, government executive order to put in place some way to get people to wear masks? Whether it's, um, having boardwalk security that tells people, hey, you got to put your mask on. Is it better signage? Um, I mean, in, in a perfect world, I think a fine would be the best way to get the message across. But I think it's totally unacceptable to expect, um, people to be putting themselves in danger, um, if they choose to leave their house and, and go to the boardwalk.
Does that complete the comments?
Yes.
Excuse me, one sec. Uh, John Moore, if, if you found it insulting, I apologize, but again, it's state law. And if you think we're going to like, like sue the state and spend like a quarter million dollars in a case we cannot win, we're not going to do that. Uh, what, what you can do is you can get in touch with like your state legislators, be it Senator Gopau, Assemblypeople, Hoteling and Downey, and express it. And you'll have my signature on it. Uh, we've complained about this, but our police cannot enforce this. And if we adopted an ordinance, again, it would be thrown out by the courts. Any ordinance we adopted, penalties, has to be approved by the Monmouth County Court. So we could like really enforce it. So I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Believe me, anytime I'm outside and I got my two shots, I did not get them in Asbury Park, but I still always wear a mask. And I agree with you a hundred percent. But unless somebody comes up with a better idea than I've got, you know, if you guys wanted like, again, I, I would complain to your state legislators. And again, Mr. Fedo, if, if you want to correct me or give other ideas, please go ahead.
So Mayor, uh, before, this is Donna, I just wanted to, to interject something. So while the city is unable to require everyone to wear masks, we have been very proactive in providing masks to the community and our visitors. Um, last year on the boardwalk, our youth ambassador program was up there every day, handing out free masks to everyone. We're going to do that again this season, um, once it starts to ramp up. Um, so we will be, we also give out masks free at our city hall every day. So while we can't make people wear masks, we can certainly continue to provide them. So that is one thing the city is doing. And like the mayor said, we're also open to any other suggestions. Um, you know, we're not able to regulate the mandate that people wear masks, you know, only inside our buildings we're able to do it. But outside, we don't have that ability. And you might've said it, Donna, you, you said that we get, we're giving, currently giving out free masks, right? Yes, we give out masks every day at city hall. Anyone can come by and pick up a mask or four or five or 10 or 20. And during the season, you know, it's been cold, you know, but we'll have our ambassador program again this summer. And they'll be handing out masks at the boardwalk, the train station, our park areas, just like we did last summer.
The only other comment I was going to make was that, um, when the governor was coming out with many executive orders at the beginning of the pandemic, um, last spring, and as we were approaching the summer months, you may recall that, uh, a number of the beachfront communities either shut down their boardwalks and/or their public beaches. Um, and there was specific language in the governor's executive orders that gave municipalities the right to be more restrictive and to make that determination on their own. If there were some authority from the state, um, that gave municipalities the right to be more restrictive with regard to a mask requirement, then perhaps we could move forward, um, at the discretion of the city, but we don't have that ability. Uh, so again, I think the mayor's suggestion that you speak to state representatives and try to get the word to the governor, um, to allow municipalities to undertake their, their own regulations, uh, to that effect, that could be helpful. But right now, unfortunately, we don't have the authority to do so. Municipalities are prohibited from enacting any regulations that would be at odds with the governor's executive orders.
Thank you, Fred. Shall I move on?
Thank you.
I'm calling upon Kathleen Muma. Kathleen, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, it's Kathleen Muma, Sunset Avenue. You can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I just have two questions or, or comments about, um, things that were brought up in the workshop session. Um, the first one relates to the bathrooms, uh, in Madison Marquette. Um, thank you for, um, holding your ground there. Um, I wondered, uh, are there any requirements in the waterfront redevelopment agreement for preservation of the historic buildings that Madison owns and maintains? Do they have a certain amount of time that they're supposed to fix those or preserve them in? That's my first question. And then my second question relates to Donna's announcement about the sign, uh, cleanup, I guess, that, that you're going to take a more proactive approach on. And, um, you said that signage that's in the green space between the street and the sidewalk will be included in that, that audit or that, uh, you know, area that you're wanting to clean up. And there's some signage I've noticed around my neighborhood and around town that is located in that strip of grass between the sidewalk and the street. And I think it needs to either be refreshed or removed. And I'm talking about the signs that say neighborhood watch. So all over town, uh, at least in the northwest and northeast quadrants, there are signs that say warning. Uh, all suspicious persons and activities are immediately reported to our police department. Neighborhood watch. We look out for each other. And, um, I'm sure these are, I imagine these signs were placed long ago with the intention of promoting a safe neighborhood. But, um, you know, in the past 12 months, we've all had our eyes open to events, uh, that, uh, highlight, um, racial inequality and systemic violence. So now when I read these signs through the lens of
One minute remaining.
Thank you. When I read these signs through the lens of 2020, I think that they're unwelcoming at best and perhaps, um, discriminatory at worst. Um, you know, to say all suspicious persons and activity are immediately reported to our police department. Um, I've checked with, um, Joel Fiore, who's the patrolman listed on the city's website for the COP program, Citizens on Patrol, to see if the signs, like if he knew who they belonged to or if they belonged to the COP program. He told me that, uh, at one time, there was a neighborhood watch program, this is what the police officer told me. There was a neighborhood watch program that was separate from COP years ago when these signs were installed. The program had some momentum behind it, but has declined over the years. Um, and then Councilwoman Chapman had also told me that she does not believe there's an active neighborhood watch in my area. So, or in our, in the northwest, um, quadrant. So I would just encourage you to, to include these signs in your audit and in
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
I think those signs can come down.
Do what?
I think those signs could come down. They've been, that, the neighborhood watch has been inactive for years.
Okay, uh, I think it's something the city can definitely look into. A, a lot of the signs, and one next to my house, and I paid for it because the homeowners association started a fund, pay so much for like a sign next to your house saying like, neighborhood watch. If that's something we have to look into, no problem. I think what we're mainly going after, but Donna was talking about is like the temporary signs where like buy junk cars, vote for more, stuff like that. That, that can no longer be on city property. But I mean, as far as like, is there too many signs in Asbury Parks? There's probably too many signs in every city. So anything we can look into, we'll definitely look into. And I forgot your first question. So Donna, if you remember to go ahead.
Yeah, she asked about the preservation of the buildings, um, under the, the redevelopment agreement with Madison Marquette. And I don't recall off the top of my head if there's any specific language, but I, I will say that, um, the mayor and council and myself have taken a very active role over the past several months to, um, hold Madison Marquette to task on what they need to do. And, um, we will continue to do so. But I don't know specifically about preservation of buildings. I know there is requirements for maintenance, but not for preservation.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon 6435, 6435. Star six to unmute yourself.
Matt Daniels, Monroe Avenue. I just want to follow up Tracy's comments regarding the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition's Rent Stabilization Ordinance that is up for public vote, April 20th. This is an ordinance that remains long overdue for the residents of Asbury Park. And quite frankly, I am astonished that the city is just now establishing any form of rent control here in the spring of 2021. The city deserves rent stabilization that protects as many residents of Asbury Park as logistically possible. The residents of Asbury Park deserve a rent stabilization ordinance that ensures them that they will not be pushed out of the very city that they helped develop. The residents of Asbury Park have dedicated their time, money and livelihood to not only raise Asbury Park from the pit of socioeconomic sphere, but to protect the city's uniquely diverse spirit during its most vulnerable times. The residents of Asbury Park care about this city and they care about each other. Those who are residents of Asbury Park have an obligation to consider what is in the best interest of their fellow residents. So I encourage everyone listening, please pay a visit to apwantstrankcontrol.com. There you can read all about the ordinance. You can read it in its entirety, in fact. And you'll see why you should come out and vote yes on April 20th. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Calling upon Polly. Polly, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Polly, 1105th Avenue. Um, I, I wanted to just jump back to, um, to thank Kathleen for bringing up the, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, bring up the Uh, bring up the, um, signage, um, and the meaning, the, um, the in, the implication of the signs that she mentioned. And, uh, I also wanted to, in terms of, um, of, of equity and, uh, safety and, and clarity of, of, uh, words matter on, on signs in the city. And too many signs, John, you're exactly right. There, there are probably too many signs in every city. But if they're going to be signs, they need to be clear in their messaging. And, um, so some of the signs that, that we do have in place in the city could be removed and some could be replaced. One of which is, um, or several of which are the signs that say bike lane and then underneath say ends or underneath say begins or ahead. Um, if we're going to have signs that say bike lane, it would be just good to have a sign that says bike lane. If it says ends underneath it, it implies to drivers that there should be no bicyclists there. And bike riders don't know that either. So in the name of safety, just letting the public know that we have bike lanes in the city and hopefully we will have more. Um, additionally, the yellow that says, the, the yellow sign that says, um, share the road is known to be ineffective and, um, uh, miscommunicating what that even means to drivers who think that that means, um, yes, you must share the road with drivers. So that yellow sign can go away and be replaced with one that's universally used in many cities that say bicyclists may use full lane, which is New Jersey state law. So, um, I believe that, that Mike Manzala has-
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That Mike Manzala said we have those signs either on order or, um, maybe even some in our, in storage somewhere in the city. And, um, so signage, words matter. Um, you know, it's not just about bike lanes and bicyclists, but it's about being clear about what the city is about, about, about equitable, um, mobility in the city, about clear messaging and taking away excessive sign, signage that doesn't help. Um, including some signs on the boardwalk that are all about enforcement and, um, kind of threatening language toward bicyclists, but we can talk about that another time. And, um, thanks also that we have, um, I believe a program to get some specials on bikes this summer and in a training program. So I'm really excited about that and more community policing. Um, so thanks all. Five seconds to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Polly. Uh, I'm sure Donna and Michael will look into the signage and, uh, we'll see some results. And as far as police officers and bikes, I've been hearing that for the past five years. So that's hope 2021 makes it happen.
Shall I move on?
Please.
Okay, I'm calling upon three, three, five, zero, three, three, five, zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNolley, Seventh Street, Southeast Florida. Uh, I just sold my home in Asbury Park on D L A Drive on the earlier part of this month. Fifteen year homeowner resident there. And, uh, uh, I'm looking to buy in Asbury or Long Branch. I'm leaning towards Long Branch because, uh, and I have a right to say it because Long Branch no longer has Ann Selgrim Aaron as the city attorney, which leads me to what I'm going to speak about. In 2002, the city manager, former fire chief of Asbury Park and three council members were all convicted of federal crimes for signing the redevelopment program and selling off land in Asbury for pennies on gold. It was a disgrace. I think someone bought the whole boardwalk and buildings and convention hall and the palace for $6 million. And I think they got $2 million back. Now, who was the law firm representing Asbury at the time? Ann Selgrim Aaron, the specific lawyer, James Aaron. Today, that firm still represents Asbury Park, only now we have a partner, Mr. Frederick Fredo, who, whenever you're in a meeting, a planning meeting or a zoning meeting or any kind of meeting, if you bring up any problems about the master redevelopment program and all the felons that went to prison for five years, two years, six years, if you bring it up, they say, oh, you can't talk about that, you know? Mute him, you can't talk. Well, I'm talking about it now. So I'd like to know why Ann Selgrim Aaron Law Firm and now Mr. Refredo is able to be so conflicted with these developers. They party together, they meet together, they have separate sunshine meetings together. They work with the board together and the zoning board and the mayor and council together. They raise political funds together. They raise political funds together. So in 2002, after they signed it, Mr. Weldon went to prison for five years. Mr. Condos went to prison. Mr. Hamilton went to prison and the mayor Sanders went to prison. So that's what you keep touting as this great master redevelopment program that said, we're supposed to have a pool and we're supposed to have a billion dollar building on, uh, on Ocean Avenue. No, it isn't. That was all signed by felons. And the same law firm now that's allowing this to continue, Ann Selgrim Aaron and our city attorney, Mr. Refredo, should be looked at. And what do I mean by looked at? Let's do another Operation Bid Rig where they scooped up 60 New Jersey politicians, lawyers, developers, mayors, city managers, et cetera. Right? Why not now? Why is it that you could keep deceiving the public that-
Time's up.
Okay, before we go to next, let me just correct something. Once again, Mr. McNolley is wrong as usual. To the best of my knowledge, no council person that was on the board from electing 2001 and on the council in 2002 were ever brought for charge with any charges. So he's mixing apples and oranges, going back to the nineties and trying to mix it all together as usual. Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised, the motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move to close.
Second, you got Clayton.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, the meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of March 10th and the municipal council regular meeting minutes of March 10th at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall? Council member Kendall?
Get me, sorry.
Okay.
Jesse, you should be unmuted now.
Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes. We're voting on the minutes, Mr. Kendall.
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, deputy mayor-
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. On the consent agenda, we have resolution 21, 151, a resolution approving special event applications. We have 21, 152, a resolution amending the temporary bu- budget appropriations for the 2021 budget. Resolution 21, 153, a resolution authorizing payment to Wake Fair and Food Corporation for the purchase of monetary cards for the city's food assistance program through Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, C V CARES Act funds. Resolution 20, 21, 167, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the State of New Jersey, the Department of Public Safety, Division of Highway Traffic Safety under the 2021 U Drive, U Text, U Pay distract, distracted driving crackdown. Do I have a motion?
I have a question, Melody. When should I ask that?
You-
Okay, so with the consent agenda, there was something on the bill resol-
I think we need, uh, you need to move it and get a second, then I guess.
Actually, you know what? I, my question's 154. Sorry, 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 sorry. I got a kid and a dog.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and before we go on, let me just say, so everybody out there knows, uh, 2021, 153 is the city using $75,000 of the C D B G money through the CARES Act to make sure people in Asbury Park have food. Thank you.
We are on to individual resolutions. I have resolution 20, 21, 154, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. There are two items being removed from the payment of bills. They are T 43 dash 00850 000299 in the amount of $5,747.16. The second item is T dash 48 dash 56 dash 850 dash 000806 in the amount of $5,429.95. Those items are being removed from the bill list. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Melody, can I ask what those bills were for?
Yes, those were for, um-
Those are the Scotland bills, right, Melody?
Yes, McMahon and Scotland.
Okay.
Okay.
They're, they're bills, they're bills that were submitted from a firm that hasn't worked for us for three years, going back to 2016. So we just need more clarification and why, why somebody can wait five years to send us a bill.
Okay, good catch. Um-
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start all over. Do I have a motion?
We had a motion in a second.
Okay. Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution, we are on to resolution 21, 155, a resolution identifying of menu items as per the subsequent developer agreement between the City of Asbury Park, Madison Asbury Retail LLC and Asbury Partners. Move it.
Wait.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to resolution 21, 156, a resolution temporarily relaxing existing ordinances and procedures associated with review and approval for existing restaurants and food establishments and retail businesses to offer outdoor dining and outdoor displays. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 21 dash 157, a resolution authorizing, with authorization to ratify the APSME union contract. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Moore.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to resolution 21 dash 158, a resolution authorizing floor repairs at DPW. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Council, uh, deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 21 dash 159, a resolution authorizing payment to A H Hoffman LLC for service and repairs to the underground storage tank at the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Clayton.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 21 dash 160, a resolution authorizing the rental of an ADA restroom trailer for the 2021 beach season. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Any questions or comments before I move on to roll call? Council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On resolution 21 dash 161, a resolution awarding a contract to J C Contracting Inc. for Asbury and Ridge Avenue traffic signal improvements. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, any questions or comments before I move on to roll call? Not hearing any, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to resolution 21 dash 162, a resolution rescinding liquor license 130333 016 007 Asbury Lanes LLC for the 2020, for the 2021 liquor license renewal period. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton. Second, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 163 is a resolution approving liquor license 130333 016 007 Asbury Lanes LLC for the 2021 licensing period. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on resolution 21 dash 164, a resolution, a supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional non-recourse redevelopment area bonds of, of the City of Asbury Park in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,125,000. Waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project. In connection, a project being undertaken in the city by K Hamanians Cove at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and as a portion of non-recourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 10th, February, I'm sorry, February 20th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 21 dash 165, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with 202 Seventh Avenue LLC for the development of a property located at block 4201, lots three and four, 202 to 204 Seventh Avenue and rescinding and replacing the resolution adopted on March 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Clayton.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to resolution 21 dash 166, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Bobcat lawnmower for the DPW. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Move it.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinances, ordinances for introduction- We are on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 21-10, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations pertaining to Civil, Sylvan Avenue, Adams Street, Atkins Avenue, and Avenue A, with a public hearing date of April 28th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Moore.
Councilmember Chapman?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinance 21-11, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations pertaining to the city's alleyways with a public hearing date of April 28th. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-12, an ordnance, I'm sorry, we're on to the ordinance for 21-12, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations pertaining to the Fisherman's Lot Park, Parking Lot, with a public hearing date of April 28th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, this is a question, yes, a question though. I thought this was gonna be on the next meeting because we have to order signs and everything. We wanted this one to go fairly quick. That's between you and Mr. Manziel.
The, okay, you want to move this up to the April 14th meeting? The public hearing?
I think we'd be, I think we'd be better off just because we're getting close to when it's gonna be enforced. And if Mr. Manziel wants to say yea or nay, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. If, if it can be moved to the April 14th, it would be better to have the regulation in place in, uh, before the summer if the council approves.
Okay, so the public hearing on ordinance 21-12 will be April 14th.
Thank you.
We are on to the ordinance for introduction 21-13, an ordinance limiting service fees charged to retail food handling establishment by third-party food takeout and delivery service applications and internet websites such times when the restrictions upon such fees imposed by the state law are in, are inoperative, and amending and supplementing the city code, the code of the City of Asbury Park accordingly with an April 14th public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinance for introduction 21-14, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-9 entitled Display of Merchandise in Public Areas, Outdoor Sidewalk Cafes of Chapter 4, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with an April 14th public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to ordinance for introduction 21-15, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, correcting a Scrivener's error in ordinance 21-2 with a public hearing date of April 14th. Do I have a motion?
Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to second readings, public hearings. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you want a brief overview of the ordinance before we open it up into the public? And it would be ordinance 21-6, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 4-10 entitled Permits for Special Events of Chapter 4, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park.
Please.
Do we have someone to provide us with the brief?
Yeah, so basically it's, it's what the ordinance title reads. Um, the Special Events Committee at the beginning of the year reviewed our special event, uh, ordinance and made some suggested changing to pricing and the way, um, some, um, spaces and events were, um, approved. And that reflects in the ordinance that's being up for the hearing this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 21-6?
Move, move to open, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on ordinance 21-6. Uh, members of the public, you can use your, the raise hand function in the meeting or the, um, star six on your phone. I will call your name. And I will call your name and the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when, no, I won't give you a warning. Um, please keep your comments about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon 5124, 5124. 5124, star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rita Morano, 8th Avenue. How is this ordinance changing? I mean, like, what's, what's the change? The fee? I didn't hear, hear it all, so I'm not sure what I heard. Does anybody know what the, the changes are?
I can jump in. Uh, Rita, there are a number of fees that have been updated and increased, uh, for 2021. Um, and we've also added a fee for use of St. John's Island as one of the public parks.
They have to pay there?
Yes, $500 per day, and there was previously no fee for that.
Ah, okay. That's all I wanted to know. I didn't, you know, I didn't hear the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I'm calling upon 3350, 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNally, 7th Street, Southeast Florida. Uh, I'd like to, uh, just reference the fact one of the, uh, increases in the fee, $500 for the island, I believe in the middle of Sunset Lake. And, uh, uh, ba- basically, um, I've kind of been following the Sunset Lake development and everything that's going on there, and now you're gonna start to charge for a permit. But I, I wonder how much the public, and I'm gonna say that I don't agree with it. I, I wouldn't issue the permit because basically from what I understand, they're looking to set up like music events there and, and play loud music in the middle of Sunset Lake, which should cause noise pollution everywhere. So the city, I guess, is saying, well, if it's gonna be, let's make $500 a day on it. So that's the trade-off. The city gets 500 bucks and the City of Asbury gets noise and, and litter and, and, and pollution. So that's my comment. I don't think you should approve it, and I don't think you should get permits for that. Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised? A motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 21-6.
Move to close?
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed on 21-6. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 21-6?
Move, move to adopt?
Do I have a?
Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The next ordinance up for a public hearing is 21-7, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 4 entitled General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park in order to establish a new section thereof to be known as Section 4-27, entitled Film and Photography Permits. Do we have a brief overview of the ordinance before we open up the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, Melody, this is Donna again, and, um, the title again reflects this is an ordinance that the city actually, um, looked to introduce back in 2020, pre, pre-pandemic. Um, we just had to change a couple of definitions, and this is the ordinance to, um, regulate and manage the, uh, filming, photography permits that the city, um, authorizes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 21-7?
Move to open?
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on ordinance 21-7. Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon Maureen Nevin. Maureen Nevin, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, um, Maureen Nevin, Dela Court. Um, what, how, how is, how are these monies, um, to be overseen, you know, the collection of them? And how is this money to be used? Um, for this film and photography permit? That's my question.
Does that complete your comments?
Um, yeah, is there, is there anything in this that, um, some groups, um, could you name the groups if there are? Are, um, the fees waived for? Any exceptions? And how is the money being used?
So, Maureen, um, so all the fees go into our general fund like any fees that we collect. Um, there are certain, um, fees that are, um, listed in Section C. Um, they vary from a one-time fee of $50 for a nonprofit. Um, and it can be in excess of $2,500 for a major motion picture for a minimum of six days, six days or more.
And also, I'll just add to what Donna indicated, there is an exemption for, um, applications for educational slash student films. They're exempt from permit fees.
Thanks, Brett. Hey? I am calling upon Carrie Butch. Carrie Butch, please state your name and address for the record.
500 Dela Drive, Carrie Butch. Um, I just want to encourage you guys. It looks like, you want to encourage independent filmmaking, right? So I, I, it's, looks like when I just glanced at this very quickly, that it looks like Donna has a lot of leeway in, in determining the fees, right? She has a little bit of leeway, right? So I would just encourage her, if, if it's in between a nonprofit and a, and an educational film, and it's not a major motion picture, that there's a, there's a reasonable fee for independent filmmakers. It doesn't cost the city any money, but it doesn't, it doesn't preclude, you know, young artists or, or any kind of artists from, from, from making an independent film in Asbury Park. Am I, am I correct that it is, it is, um, it, it, Donna has leeway?
Yes, you are correct.
I think you're correct. Yep, you're correct on both, and it's, you're correct as far as like when this came up two years ago, this is not looking to gouge independent filmmakers or the little guys. So I believe it's well-written and Donna has that leeway, and I think the ordinance addresses your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I am calling upon 3350, 3350. Please state your name and address for the record. 3350?
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm, I'm trying. There's some technical problem. Ernest McNally, 7th Street, Southeast Florida. Uh, I, I just want to say that, uh, I like to do a lot of independent journalism work and, and making, uh, videos and movies and photography. But, but my theme is crime, corruption, and nepotism in Asbury. And what I want to know is, is the city manager going to decide whether certain filmmakers can make a film and others can't? Meaning, if I want to apply for a permit to look at crime, corruption, nepotism in Asbury, would I be denied and someone who, let's say, wants to do it on the second-best beach in the world, they'll get a permit? So how will that come down? Will, will there be a decision, or is it open truly to any independent person willing to lawfully, uh, uh, create their, their film? My example included. I'm, I'm being a little selfish now because I'm just being very forthright. I like to film crime, corruption, and nepotism in Asbury. If I apply for a permit, would I be denied if I write that?
Um, Brett, do you want?
I, I, I can respond initially, and, and if anybody else wants to, uh, also, um, respond, feel free. But, um, the provisions in here about refusal to issue a permit, um, really speak to the circumstances where the issuance of the permit would potentially pose a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or cause annoyance or disturbance to, or a negative impact to the quality of life of city residents. It, it doesn't bear upon the content of the film. It really has to do with ensuring the citizens, um, and those who live in Asbury Park are not going to be affected to, uh, you know, by a nuisance factor, um, when, when, uh, a commercial film is made in their neighborhood. So it, it's not related to the content of the film. So no, that should not be.
All right. I, no, I appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised. A motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 21-7.
Move to close?
Move it. Move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed on ordinance 21-7. A motion to adopt ordinance 21-7.
Move to adopt, Quinn. Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The next ordinance for a public hearing is 21-8, an ordinance establishing new requirements relating to stormwater control within the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Section 30-58 entitled Stormwater Control of Chapter 30, Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park accordingly. Uh, do we have a brief overview of the ordinance?
Uh, yes, Melody, this is an ordinance that is, um, being presented, um, as stated due to the updates from the DEP requiring stormwater that council will look to adopt this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 21-8?
Move to open, Clayton.
Second, second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on ordinance 21-8. Members of the public may participate by using the raise hand function in the meeting or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and all your comments must be regarding the ordinance for public hearing. Not seeing any hands raised. A motion to close the, the.
Move to close, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 21-8. A motion to adopt ordinance 21-8.
Move to adopt?
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to adjournment. A motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.